All righty. Please stand for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All righty, welcome to our county commission meeting. Couple of things, if you brought one of these, you might want to put it on vibrate so you're not embarrassed if it should go off. If you need a listening device, contact one of our county staff, they can help you with that. And, meeting documents are right there on the end by Commissioner Hybarger if you'd like to see any of the things we're referencing. So, and those documents are also available at any time down in the auditor's office, call them up to have a time to look at them if you want to. All righty, I'm gonna look for a motion to amend our agenda.
I'd like to make a motion to amend and approve item 2B, please.
So we have a motion to amend it. And look for a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. Motion carries, so now we will look for a motion to approve our agenda.
So move.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. Motion carries. Moving on to our meeting minutes, look for a motion to approve our meeting minutes for 2A and, 2A, B, and C.
Point of order, do we have to read these into the record? I think we do. Item A is approve July 6, 2020, regular commission meetings and authorize the auditor to publish the official copy. Item B is to approve July 14, 2021, special commission meeting minutes. And item C is consider motion to rescind previous approved county commission meeting minutes for June 15th on 2021 and June 22nd, 2021, approve the replacement minutes for publication.
So we have a motion?
That's my motion.
Second.
And a second. All righty, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. Motion carries, we have bills to be paid in the amount of $6,483,646.86.
Um, we need to, I understand, I just asked for clarification on 2B, that we need to amend that?
Yes.
Yes?
2B.
2B, so that needs to be a separate motion, correct?
Yes.
Okay.
I thought we did that.
Do I need to rescind the motion that I just made for A, B, and C?
It'd be cleaner.
Okay.
I remove my motion. I'd make a new motion to approve A and C.
Just a second.
Pardon me, item 2C needs to be considered to rescind the previously approved county commission meetings. They were edited after they had been published. And to approve the replacement minutes for publishing, there's, were significant changes within that document, the two documents from June 2015 and June 22nd.
Should we just start with A and approve A? Is A okay? I would make a motion to approve A.
Which is our regular commission meeting minutes and authorize the auditor to publish the official copy from July 6.
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. All right, so now 2B, I think is the one we're getting hung up on.
What are we amending? I'm confused. Okay.
There was a, during the minute, there was a date wrong. So we need to amend them and then approve.
So what date is wrong?
The date on the top of the document on the left-hand side reads April versus June or July.
So, it should be, should, are those, it says July, it says 4/13/21.
That is what is being amended, it should read 7/14/21.
Okay. So I would make a motion to approve, to amend the minutes that are currently dated April 13, 2021, to reflect the correct date of July 14, 21, 2021.
Second that. Okay, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. We'll get through this. Now looking at 2C, consider a motion to rescind previously approved county commission meeting minutes for June 15, 2021 and June 22, 2021, and approve the replacement minutes for publishing. And what are we?
That is correct, auditor. The auditor's here.
Yes. So, after review of those minutes from, in June, we found some material omissions. We consulted with the state's attorney, suggested we have those republished to correct those errors and omissions.
All righty, any questions? Motions. Motion to approve item 2C.
Second.
Second by Bender, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. Motion carries, okay, we got through that, I think. Moving on to bills to be paid in the amount of $6,483,646.86.
Pay the bills.
Second.
Comments?
Mr. Chair.
Yes, sir.
The bills include 4.6 million, that's remitted to the state. That's a big chunk of what we've got.
Vehicle licensing fees?
Yeah.
Coming back to us, okay. We have a motion and a second, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. Motion carries. We have reports, we have the auditor's account with the treasurer for April of 2021, the auditor's financial reports for June 2021 with the cash balances. Any comments on these from the auditor? Okay. We have the sheriff's report, the Minnehaw County coroner's report, and the Minnehaw County Highway Monthly Construction Projects Updates. So those reports are all available on the end if you'd like to see them. Personnel actions, we have, look for a motion to approve routine personnel actions.
Motion to approve?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. Motion carries. Abatements recommended for approval, there are none. Notices and requests, we have the first one, Highway Department Notice of Construction Change Order Number 3 for Highway Project MC 1807. These are no action, just notices, and again, they're available on the end. And authorize the auditor's office to publish notice to bidders for the Minnehaw County Furniture Package.
Motion to, don't we have to, don't we have to have a motion on that that's?
On B?
Motion to, motion to approve the auditor, auditor's office to publish notice. That was my motion.
Second.
Okay, so for 7B, we have a motion to authorize the auditor's office to publish notice to bidders for the Minnehaw County Furniture Package. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. Motion carries, and yes, I. It's just a construction change order for the highway department. Planning and zoning notices, there are none. Petitions for compromise of lien, there are none. We are now at the opportunity for public comment. If anybody who is here who would like to speak to an item that is not on our agenda, we welcome you. We give you a few minutes to address the commission, and now is your opportunity if you'd like to hop up. Good morning.
Good morning, Commission. Emmett Reisstrafer, resident at 915 South Fourth Avenue here in Sioux Falls.
Mr. Chairman. Emmett, this is for something that's not on the agenda.
Correct, yep, there is an item of interest on the agenda today, but I wanted to just speak more generally about who I am and why I'm here. Haven't had a chance to attend a meeting yet this year. For folks that don't know me, I'm very involved in the legal cannabis industry. I've been in the industry for close to 10 years. I'm a founding board member of the Cannabis Industry Association of South Dakota, and I've just been monitoring the activity closely in all 66 counties and about 28 different communities across the state. My goal is really just to be a resource to you and to the community if any questions come up. Secondarily, my goal is to go into the business and to bring my experience here, and to hopefully be a good steward in the community and to show how this can be done responsibly, safely, and in compliance with all of the laws and regulations in place. With that, I just encourage you to approach it with an open mind. Have some, you know, faith in the process, I guess. I know it's new and it's scary to some people, but it has worked well in other communities. I think we'll find that right approach in terms of zoning, what these businesses look like, advertising, and all those things. So I just really don't have anything more specific to say other than thank you for taking a look at the issue, and please don't hesitate to reach out if there's anything I can help with or any questions I can answer. So, thank you.
Thank you very much, Mr. Reisstrafer. Anybody else here for public comment? All right, we'll move on to our regular business. First items, a second reading and public hearing for the adoption of an ordinance prohibiting the consumption or smoking of cannabis in public places, and our attorney will take the lead on this. Good morning, Eric.
Not sure past practice, since it's the first time I've been up at the big tables.
Either one is fine.
So, Eric Boggs, State's Attorney's Office, members of the commission, this is the second reading of the proposed ordinance to prohibit public consumption and/or smoking of cannabis products. I believe, again, per our previous discussions, the items that we had discussed are all present. There are some definitional issues up front. The purpose and intent behind it is also laid out. It is, if there's a violation, is classified as a class 2 misdemeanor, and does reference that statute of the code, maximum fine and potential days in jail. Not to say that any of that would actually occur, the intent is just to have the public understand that this is an activity. If adopted, that you don't want to occur in a public setting. So, with that, I'd stand by for any questions if you have any.
Thank you very much, Eric. Any questions for Eric? Okay, since this is the second reading and public hearing, we will take proponents. Those are, that are in favor of this ordinance, it is now your opportunity to speak. Do we have any proponents that would like to speak to this issue? All righty, do we have anybody that is in opposition to this ordinance? Good morning.
Good morning again. So, I'm not really opposed to it as a whole, but generally, if it's not perfect, I feel it's more appropriate to oppose. There's just one little piece of it, I think, I wanted to point out, at least so you all understand. I kind of went through this fire drill with the city of North Sioux City and a couple other municipalities. We fully support, you know, prohibiting smoking in public. Nobody should have to inhale secondhand smoke that isn't their own, isn't their choosing. So I think that makes sense. Where it kind of reaches a little broader is just on the term "consumption", because that wouldn't apply to just smoking, and there are methods of smokeless consumption. Edibles are the most commonly known, sometimes tinctures. Now, we're also not advocating that people do those in public either. However, there are rare scenarios where a person may need their medicine when they're not at home or they're far away from home. Much like prescription medications, we don't advise that you drive under the influence or, you know, do things that you shouldn't while you're under the influence of prescription medication, but sometimes you may be at the campground, you may be out fishing, you may be out shopping for groceries. Depending on what your medicine is, you might need it if it's, you know, to treat symptoms as they arise. And in the case of epileptic patients, MS patients, symptoms can arise at any time, and that's when they choose to medicate, so they might not be at home. So, I know in North Sioux City, they removed the term "consumption" and made it more narrow to just cover smoking, and that's what I'd ask you to consider. I know it's kind of a very rare scenario that I'm talking about, but just doing my duty to represent the patients that I know and want to speak for them, otherwise I think it's a great ordinance and happy to move forward.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anybody else in opposition or recommending changes? All righty, I'll turn it over to the commission for discussion. Commissioners, Commissioner Barth.
I have a question for the state's attorney. My question is, I know that Lincoln County and the city of Sioux Falls have been working on ordinances or whatever also. How does this, how does the Minnehaw County version dovetail with theirs?
I don't know that actually, the city of Sioux Falls has adopted a prohibition on the public consumption or smoking of cannabis products, so I don't know that I can answer the question as to how it matches. As I indicated at a previous meeting, this original draft that I had substantially amended did start out in Meade County and Black Hills. It may have been similarly adopted as per some previous testimony from other cities as well, or some version of it. That certainly leaves you free to make amendments, if that's something that you wish to do, because again, the drafting was something that I put together. If you want to match it to other municipalities or other counties, that would be something that could be examined as well. It would just delay the implementation.
Commissioner Hybarger.
Just to address, Commissioner Barth, we meet again tomorrow, and we'll continue to have those conversations with Lincoln County and the city of Sioux Falls. And I don't know either if they have passed anything like that, and I would suggest that if we find that we're not happy with this, we can always amend it later. And I would make a motion to approve the, the second reading of this ordinance.
I'll second that.
Any other comments?
Yeah, also with organizations and the communities that have been involved that Commissioner Hybarger talked about, the city of Brandon and the city of Dale Rapids have also participated in those conversations. So it is a joint conversation to make everybody's as close to dovetailing, if you will. So everybody's is the same, so we don't have multiple interpretations.
Commissioner Barth.
I guess, you know, I'm not feeling radical about any of this, but what about the comment that, you know, non-smoking consumption? If I'm the passenger in Cindy's car and I need to take it as a gummy or whatever, would that be a class 2 misdemeanor?
I imagine it could be, I'm not the attorney.
Probably drop me off, but.
The indiscreet consumption of something like that, I just don't understand.
But I think smoking clearly is an issue, and I just wonder about that part.
Anybody else want to talk to that?
I think it'll be important after tomorrow's conversation at 8:30 where we hear from all the other entities that are involved in this conversation that we all be the same. So if we wanted to delay this a week, we could, but I would prefer not to, and move ahead and then amend it later.
My sentiments exactly, Commissioner Hybarger.
That's my sentiments, if we need to amend it later, we can amend it later. I think we just need to move forward and we can always change our minds.
We have a different, I'm sorry.
Small moment of clarification, the combined task force of the various governmental entities is working primarily on the licensing and regulation of the establishments and the sale and whatnot, rather than this particular issue of the public consumption or smoking. So, while those conversations certainly overlap, I don't know that the combined effort of the task force is really to address this particular topic, so.
Mr. Chairman, question.
Yes, sir.
Mr. Boggs, so if we pass it and then decide to revise it, then we would have to bring the proposed new language, approve it at post-notice, approve it at one meeting, and then the final approval after that? I mean, what would be the process? I mean, it's not going to be as easy as rolling over and changing the ordinance.
Mr. Chairman, very good question, actually. If you wanted to make amendments to this before you adopt, anything that's more than typographical or minor would be considered a substantial amendment and would require an additional reading. So, it would, that's just general protocol under statute. If however you adopt it and it becomes effective, and then at some future point you see other jurisdictions having adopted a version that you preferred better than the one you have adopted, you would just revise the ordinance per regular adoption of a new ordinance. It would be called or revised or corrected, but it would still be a new ordinance. First and second reading.
All righty, so I think we have the groundwork. Either way, I think the process is the same whether we adopt this, and I personally prefer to see us adopt something. So, we've been through the process and we have something, we can always amend it later if we have to. But I don't see the indiscreet, or indiscreet consumption of cannabis if you're someplace and you need a gummy bear or something as being a huge law-breaking event. So I'm not too concerned personally about that issue, so. We have a motion from Hybarger and a second from Benega. Do we need a roll call on this?
Why not?
Yes, sorry.
Benega?
Yes.
Hybarger?
Aye.
Barth?
Aye.
Bender?
Aye.
Karski?
Aye. Motion carries. All right, we are now to a brief on the fiscal year 2022 provisional budget. Good morning, Susan, our first time to get to hear from you, welcome.
Good morning, Susan Beeman with the auditor's office. Just want to remind you of our 2022 budget timeline. We are at, today, the final review of our provisional budget. Next week, you'll be asked to do the adoption of the provisional budget at next week's meeting. The slide that you have up in front of you is the adjustments to our proposed and recommended provisional budget from our last meeting. I'll call your attention to the section that says adjustments to revenue about quarter of the way down. These are the adjustments that were made to the original budget that had been presented to you. That includes the additional revenue from our lease to the, for the courthouse rent to Lincoln County, some adjustments to register of deeds revenue, the public defender offices grant revenue, and some adjustments from some air guard and museum matrix adjustments in addition to revision to bank franchise tax. So the additional revenue we have is the $632,000 of additional increase to revenue. A small variance to transfer between funds for emergency management fund, which is matrix-related. And then, the adjustment to appropriations includes the four new FTEs that were previously discussed. The additional 1% matrix adjustment, that brings our matrix adjustment up to the 2.5% matrix adjustment. The agreed-upon FFNE and state's attorney software. And then, a few decreases in expenses previously discussed for marketing and courts. So bringing our increase to appropriations of $1,553,739. Where we are landing for provisional budget cash applied is the $6,902,104. This is in line and actually a little bit under our targeted cash applied of the $6,964,208. So we are, we are a little bit under our targeted cash applied, so we're in a good position. I'll just pause there for questions or comments. I should also mention that we held our health insurance increase at 15%, to be conservative, as previously discussed.
And if anybody's wondering what cash applied means, that's the money we're taking out of our savings account to make our budget work. So, comments, questions for Susan? Commissioner Hybarger.
I don't know when is the appropriate time to bring this up, and it's not an action issue today, but I would, last year, we added 2% to our ambulance funding, and I would be interested in doing another 2% this year. I know they struggle continually, and that's a very small dollar amount. And so, I would just throw that idea out there, and I've talked to staff, and they just said this was the day I needed to throw the idea out, so I am.
Do you know a number that would impact that by budgetarily?
I don't remember, I did look it up, it was, I think it's like less than $3,000, I don't remember. Somebody have to run the numbers for me quick, but it's less than $3,000.
Less than $3,000 to make that.
Or right at $3,000, yeah, so, just throwing it out there.
Mr. Chairman, I like Commissioner Hybarger's idea. In fact, why don't we just make a motion to add $3,000?
Add 2%?
I would say 2%, but I would make a motion to, if we want to do that. I don't know that we can do that, this is a briefing, so I don't think we can. I think I have to throw it out and it would come back to the next meeting next week, so. Then the numbers could be accurate too, so you may, you have time to think about it.
Do 6,000, anyway.
Okay, so we'll be considering probably an increase of 2% to that ambulance budget at our final budget hearing, which will be, what did we say, on September 7?
Today, yeah, July 27.
Yeah.
Or July, I'm sorry, July 27, thank you.
Yep.
Okay, anything else? Commissioner Benega.
Susan, the state's attorney software, I know there's a group working on implementation of that. Is that supposed to be completed in 2022? Or are we just assuming that it's going to be completed then?
Commissioner Benega, that, we do not know that.
Okay.
We won't know that for a little while, we're still, we haven't even quite got the committee off the ground yet.
So that could be a change down the road.
Yep.
200,000, I believe.
That's what I thought it was.
Yep.
Okay.
If you can continue, thank you, Susan.
This next slide is a summary of our highway fund. The major change from the original requested budget to the adjusted budget, which is roughly 1.4 million, is the matrix adjustment increase, as well as the additional 1.3 million of requested dollars that you had been briefed on two weeks ago at the July 6 meeting for equipment and road materials. So that does lead us with an ending cash reserve of 4.628 million in that fund with the adjusted requested budget.
Comments, questions?
Susan, so is that a deficit of $306,000?
Yes, we are using some of our surplus or cash applied into that fund.
Thank you.
And we're still, have a projected ending cash reserve of 4.6 million.
What is that as a percentage of the budget? Is it 4.6 million of the 14 million? Is that?
That, the 4.628 takes our beginning cash balance plus our revenues minus our expenditures to get to that ending cash reserve.
I guess, yeah, we don't have anything in policy, but it's always been a discussion that we try to maintain a reserve ratio of 20 or 25%, is that right? Commissioner Benega.
Yeah, I think there is conversations that we've had in the past. I'm convinced of that, but my memory is horrible, that we did establish a policy, and I think Commissioner Hybarger agrees with me, but I think it is above the 25% that we talked about. Where about, if I do the number in my head, it's about 30-some percent right now.
Okay. Excellent. Any other questions, comments? Okay, moving on.
This next slide is a cash reserve analysis that we had put together for our building fund at Commissioner Benega's request. I won't read the slide in detail since there's a lot of numbers on there. Essentially, what we did was we looked at the prior two-year actuals and our current year budget, and then forecasted that out. We did increase revenue in the forecast by roughly 2.5%. So you can see, we've had a few variables in there within the details for the projected budgets, as well as for the expenditures. We've broken that out between the bond payments and just the ongoing expenses. So, what we're recommending in this fund is that we keep at least a cash reserve minimum of $2 million. That allows us for a potential disruption in revenue to maintain our current ongoing routine monthly maintenance so that those services can still be provided. And as you can see, we're currently over that $2 million threshold, and we're, we feel that we're adequate in that cash reserve.
Comments, questions?
I just wanted to thank the auditor and Susan for putting this together, because this is the first time we've projected cash reserves this far in advance, and I appreciate the fact that they put that extra effort into doing that, and that gives us somewhat of a roadmap in making decisions that are long-term now. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Commissioner Barth.
Not much to say, except that I'm glad that the auditor isn't the most exciting guy in the county.
I think it's critical to note our bond payments, how much they are changed from 2019, you know, through 2023 and 2024 projected. We don't have a big mortgage, basically, so, all righty. Moving on.
The next three slides are our 2022 Means of Finance. Over on the right, just a few notes that I'll call out. One, our opt-out for 2022 is budgeted at the same amount that we did in 2021. And then, again, we had the 2.5% matrix adjustment, maintained our 15% insurance increase, the four new positions, the equipment requests were all included. Outside agencies were budgeted at the 2021 amounts. We did not do any increases there. And this also assumes that the $10 million bond issuance will be issued in 2021. On this slide is mainly the four main funds for us, the general fund, highway fund, and the building fund, and the debt service fund. You'll notice that the general fund and the highway fund columns reference back to previously discussed slides, so I won't go into detail on those. And then we also have the emergency management fund. Any questions on that slide before we advance? Okay.
I don't see any.
On the second slide of the Means of Finance, we have six of our statutorily required separate funds, the library fund, the 24/7 fund, the FIRE fund, domestic abuse fund, our museum store, and museum enterprise funds. I won't go into any detail on these. These are historically some smaller funds that we have. They're all pretty consistent with prior years. Okay? On the final slide is the four remaining funds that we have, the M&amp;P fund, which is the modernization and preservation fund, and a tip debt service fund, COSAP, which is a new fund for this year that is grant required to be separate, and our E911 fund. Again, I won't go into detail on those, but just call you to the total column where we have the total net means of finance of 94,418,686 with our total appropriations of 104,000, excuse me, 104,460,717, showing our net cash applied of 10,42,031.
Comments, questions? All righty, very detailed, very, very good. I'm clear on it, and we'll talk about it again next week, so.
Yay.
Thank you.
You bet. All righty, moving on then. We have a look for a motion to authorize 13.3 million inter-fund transfer from the general fund to the building fund. Mr. Kite, our county auditor, welcome, sir.
Morning, I'm Ben Kite, Auditor's Office. So, yes, so as we showed in the preliminary budget review that Susan had, we're recommending a transfer from the general fund to the building fund of 13.3 million. This represents some excess funds that we had, you know, that accumulated in 2020. And so we're, our proposal for this is really to make sure that we're staying in compliance with state statutes that, you know, requires us to maintain a balance of, in our general fund, that does not exceed 40% of our budget appropriations. So we think by the end of this of 2021, if we don't take this action of moving these funds into the building fund, we would be in violation of that statute. And I think this has additional benefit in that it kind of separates the funds. I think we would generally prefer or consider using this, these funds for potential building projects in the county.
All right, questions?
Chairman, we have building projects, so I'll make a motion to authorize a transfer of 13.3 million dollars from the general fund to the building fund as an assigned fund balance for future building needs.
A second, with just one follow-up question.
Commissioner?
So I know it's been asked of me, can you clarify, do we have flexibility to move some of this money back to the general fund in the future if we would need to do so?
Yes, so we've asked that question to our Department of Legislative Audit, and they've confirmed that we can transfer that back to the general fund or other funds if we need to.
Thank you very much.
We have a motion and a second. Roll call vote on this one.
Heiberg?
Aye.
Barth?
Aye.
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 Aye, motion carries. Second reading to consider a resolution approving the installation of rural water line service within Minnehaw County. Welcome back.
Yes, so Lincoln County Rural Water System is asking for approval to install water lines in Minnehaw County. Normally, they would just get the right-of-way from Jason landowners. In this case, the landowners weren't willing to cooperate with them, so state statute allows the county to approve those that use, because the Lincoln County Rural Water System would be using the right-of-way of some of the township roads to install these lines.
All righty.
We have provided notice to all the utilities that this action would be taken.
Okay. Questions for Mr. Kite? This is the second reading, so we do take public testimony. If anybody is here that would like to speak in favor of this resolution, any comments? Anybody here in opposition? All righty, then I'll look for a motion.
Motion to approve?
Second. We have a motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Oh, same sign. Motion carries.
Mr. Chairman?
Mr. Karstki, if I could just take a moment, I want to really thank the Auditor's Office and the Highway Department for the work that they did on this. There's so many times that we come up with really unique situations, and I know the State's Attorney's Office worked on this as well, but there was a lot of information to gather to make sure that we did all of this correctly, and it takes a lot of, a big team to pull that off, and so I just want to thank you guys for that.
All righty. Moving on, consider a motion to appoint three candidates and one alternate to the 2021 Tax Deed Appraisal Board for Evaluation of Surplus Tax Deed Properties. That's a mouthful, so go ahead.
Yes, so as part of our tax deed process, we go through and evaluate properties that are four years or more delinquent in taxes. As part of that process, we need to appoint an appraisal board that will look at the properties that we determine are, you know, that we want to take through tax deed and then auction those out. The appraisal board would provide the commission a value that they think is appropriate for those properties. So I have been working with some individuals who have agreed to serve on that. It's a volunteer position. So two people, Ken McFarland and Diane Ripkema, are former employees of Minnehaw County, and they have experience in these. The other two, Al Johnston and Bill Jensen, are experienced real estate agents here in Sioux Falls, and I think all four of them would have great experience that they could provide you with a appropriate value of these homes that we would take through tax deed.
Chairman, I would just comment that it's not our favorite thing to take people's properties under tax deed things, and, but at the same time, at some point, it becomes necessary, and this board is annually appointed, and we'll see where it goes. But in the meantime, pay your taxes.
All right, if no other comments, look for a motion.
Make a motion to approve?
Second. Motion by Bender, second by Barth. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oh, same sign. Motion carries. All right, consider a resolution to set weight limit, weight load limits on certain Minnehaw County highway bridges. Shannon, good morning, sir.
Good morning, Chairman and other Commissioners. My name is Shannon Schultz, I'm the Assistant Highway Superintendent. This is kind of an annual thing. Our bridge inspector does his bridge inspections, half the bridges every summer, and unfortunately, we have news to update the existing posting on our existing structures. Prior to today, if approved, there was 19 posted structures. If approved today, there'll be 20. So the good news is, there's only two changes. One is an existing posted structure on a township road, and that structure number is 50101080, which is located on County Highway 118, four miles south and .1 miles east of Colton. This bridge is experiencing accelerated deterioration of the double T beams, and in addition, there's some stem cracking. The recommended posting should be for a single unit truck, 28 tons, and a combination truck, 30 tons. Secondly, oh, by the way, that that structure's a 67-foot-long single span, and it is in our program to be replaced. So it should be replaced by 2023. We've known about it. It's been on our radar, and so I guess good news in 2023. That is on a county paved road. That is our only county paved roads currently that will be posted, and we kind of really prioritize not to have posted bridges on our paved system, but in this case, we just can't get it, you know, done fast enough. It is a new posting, so it just deteriorated more than we probably thought in a year, which is typical of a double T. The last, or the second item on this agenda item is structure number 50272030. It is located on a township road, 6.8 miles east and 1.3 miles south of Del Rapids on 247th Street. It's currently posted, but because of the deterioration, it's going to, the amount of decreased legal load is recommended. And that recommended posting will be a 10-ton and a 15-ton limit. That's getting down there. It will be, excuse me, yeah, it's currently in our five-year plan to be built in 2022 using bridge improvement grant funds. Again, we've known about that for a little while, so we're trying to be as timely as we can. And so the resolution that's attached shows all of our 20 posted structures, and that's nice for law enforcement. For example, for one-stop shopping, instead of look at 20 separate resolutions, we just kind of take the catalog of posted structures and repost all of them in one resolution. So that is the question, or that is the request before you today, is to approve that resolution. Stand by for questions. Go ahead, Cindy.
Questions, comments? Commissioner Heiberg?
Thank you. So the structure 1010180, the first one up by Colton, I believe, is the highway that goes to their school.
It is.
I have no idea how much the school bus weighs, but is it going to affect transportation of the school?
No, that's a fairly high posting, especially on the combination unit. The single units, you know, a bus would be a single unit.
Okay.
But no, I don't think, that's 56,000 pounds, or 56,000, right?
I have no idea how much a bus weighs.
I don't think it will, and the bus drivers, if there is an issue, they'll, they'll give us a call, and we'll work something out, but generally speaking, buses aren't impacted.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Barth? Commissioner Benega?
So Shannon, you know, people think that if a bridge has got weight restrictions, and they know they're over the restrictions, all they have to do is drive really, really fast and beat the bridge to the, to the ground.
And I work once.
But actually, when you drive really fast, it puts extra strain on the bridge, doesn't it?
That's absolutely correct. It's called dynamic loading, and if you just think about how your car, whatever you're driving, goes over a bridge, there's that bit of, your shocks kind of do a little, one of those, and that's actually adding pressure and strain, so you're absolutely correct.
So there's a little shock wave ahead of your 50-ton vehicle?
It's called dynamic loading. I'm not going to go so far as to say shock wave, but it does increase the stress and strain on a structure by going fast, yes.
So don't do that. Thank you.
Absolutely don't do that.
Shannon, can you tell me again what sufficiency rating number is? Because I cannot remember that.
It's kind of just a single number that represents the health of the structure. A zero would be very, very bad, and if we ever had anything that was zero, it would have been posted and closed a long time before it hit zero. 100 is a brand-new bridge. It takes into account six different factors, including abutment health, bridge deck health, inner slopes health, the highway health, the guardrail health, and it's just a composite number to give you a relative number of health, much like our pavement condition index.
Now I know why I forgot it.
Very similar. Just remember, zero's bad and 100's brand-new, so.
I just noticed the difference between the two ratings, one at 68, the other one at 38, so.
The double T, even though it's got a relatively high number, that's the nature of the double T beams, is they just, once they start to go, they kind of deteriorate very quickly.
Okay. My only comment is, I see the older one built in 1950 versus the other one in 1987, so I hope we can build this to 1950 specifications.
We won't be putting back any double Ts, I'll tell you that.
Is that right? Okay, okay, good to know. All righty, so that is a resolution, so I need a motion.
So move.
Second.
Motion by Benega, second by Bender. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oh, same sign, motion carries. Thank you.
Thank you.
Now we look for, consider bid award recommendation authorized chair to sign an agreement between Minnehaw County and Southeastern Behavioral Health for Transitional Housing and Cultural Services. Bids open July 6th. Good morning, Michelle.
Good morning, how are you? Michelle Boyd with the Sheriff's Office. As you stated, I'm back in front of you to finally award the contract for our Transitional Housing and Cultural Services under the COSAP grant. If you recall, we put out an RFP that was due May 5th, and we did not get any bids. We put out, published a second notice to bidders, and that closed on July 6th. We had a successful bid from Southeastern Behavioral Healthcare. They're going to partner with Urban Indian Health and also bring in the Generation Red Road program to help with that cultural piece for our Native American population. As part of their bid, Southeast Behavioral Health is going to provide eight housing units that runs through the grant period of September 30th of 2023. And their in-kind contribution that they're including in this contract is three meals a day onsite behavioral health staff that'll be there from 7:00 AM to 8:00 PM, and then they also have 24/7 monitoring with video, video cameras to provide security there. They help with medication management. They're going to also help transport to therapeutic groups, which is one of the barriers that we've been seeing in our community of them being able to get to the services, and so that will be very nice for them. They're also providing some treatment, they're furnishing all of their rooms, they each get an individual room that includes a bathroom of their own, and they'll have their bedding, linens, hygiene, and then there's also free laundry. So it's a really good opportunity that we have in front of us, and so we're kind of excited to get this going. We're going to work very closely with our specialty courts, where we're struggling to connect to the Native American clients in our specialty courts as far as keeping them engaged with programs and services and that transitional housing to try to get them to eventually a more permanent place to stay. So I'm here to request that you consider this contract with Southeast Behavioral Health and authorize the sheriff to sign the agreement. It's bid number 21-02. Any questions?
Make a motion with a comment?
Second. Motion by Heiberg, second by Benega. Comment from Heiberg?
My comment would be, this is a grant opportunity for us to study the data and how this works, and I kind of liken it a little bit to what we did with Safe Home, although we took the dive all on our own on Safe Home, and how we took a vulnerable population and found housing for them and services, and a whole lot of support for them, and how successful Safe Home has been. We have an opportunity through a grant to the county to try this with another very vulnerable population and try to keep them safe, and just to see how, sorry, I'm being distracted, but just to see how it moves forward, and we've got a grant opportunity to try to push this forward and try to help some of our very vulnerable women in our population. So anyway, thank you. This is, I know it's been a lot of work, we've been talking about this for a long time, and getting it before the grant and getting the grant, and then finding the right people to put this program forward, so.
Commissioner Karstki?
Commissioner Bender?
I also would just like, you know, to point out that how hard it's been, even when you have money, to try to find people to provide services, and, you know, there's a lot of talk about the need to do these things, but when it comes right down to doing them, they're, they're really hard, and I appreciate Southeast coming forward and being willing to be a partner on this, and I look forward to seeing the results that we get here, so.
Commissioner Benega?
Just a quick question, if we didn't have the transitional housing, where would these people be?
Well, that's the struggle right now. If we can't find housing for them, they Well, that's the struggle right now. Um, if we can't find housing for them, they go to the Bishop Dudley or um, you know, some of some of that housing, which it's, there's a huge need in our community, don't get me wrong. But what we find is people that are trying to stay in recovery or get in recovery. Um, we're sending them kind of back to that same area where they used to use and they struggled. And so staying at some of that housing um, is not beneficial to where they're trying to get. Not that it's not to take anything away from what they're doing there, but um, we're just trying to find some other opportunities in our community for them. Um, I should point out, Carol mentioned that the posting says the chair to sign. However, this was a grant that we sought through the Sheriff's Office and all of the other contracts the sheriff has been signing with them, so uh, whichever direction you would like to go with that, I have it currently that the sheriff will sign it.
Okay. I would amend my motion um, to to authorize the sheriff to sign this contract.
So we have a motion to amend.
I'll second uh, the motion to amend.
Okay. Any procedural?
No.
Issues? Okay, thank you. Alrighty, um, any other comments? Alrighty, um, the only question I have, this is all budgeted for and covered by your, the budgeting process, correct?
It's a nine hundred thousand dollar COSAP grant that goes through September thirtieth of twenty twenty three. And um, like Cindy said, we'll be looking to see, you know, how beneficial this is. Um, I've talked to Southeast Behavioral Health about if this is a good program and it's working well, seeking other grant opportunities that maybe they could look at um, getting and actually managing. Um, if not, we'll have to address that when the time comes. I do just wanna again recognize the state's attorney's office because Eric and now Drew has have really helped me a lot in this process. It's been kind of a heavy lift, but they've been very, very helpful, so.
So do we vote on the motion to amend and then on the main, okay, so, wanna make sure. Um, so we have a motion to amend. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Pose same sign, motion carries. If there's no other questions or comments.
I think the auditor has a comment.
Clarification, this uh, was not in the twenty twenty one budget. It is in the twenty twenty two budget, proposed budget. But we'll have to do a supplement for the twenty twenty one uh, budget with those grant grant proceeds, but we have it included in the twenty twenty two budget, so.
And we can do that.
Yes.
Okay. So we have a amended motion. All those in favor of the amended motion say aye.
Aye.
Pose same sign, motion carries. Thank you very much, Michelle. You bet. Alright, authorized chair to sign the inter-local agreement between Minnehaha County and the city of Sioux Falls for the twenty twenty one JAG program award. Captain Bosman, good morning, sir.
Good morning, Commissioner. This is Joe Bosman with the Sheriff's Office. This morning I have in front of you a request to sign an inter-local agreement between Minnehaha County and the city of Sioux Falls. What this is for is for what we call our JAG grant, which stands for Justice Assistance Grant. It's a federal grant that is awarded to municipalities and counties based on crime stats that are reported from the year prior. Uh, Minnehaha County and the city of Sioux Falls have been joint partners in this grant for numerous years now. The agreement that is to be signed identifies who is the fiscal agent, which will be the city of Sioux Falls. So the city of Sioux Falls will actually receive the funds. We will be a sub-recipient under them where we both have our certain percentages, a thirty five sixty five split that we will use for law enforcement projects, equipment and training. But as part of this agreement is that both parties have to sign the agreement. And then later on, I'll be coming back for a request of a public hearing where we get to discuss and have an opportunity for public comment on the proposed spending plans.
Okay, questions for Mr. Bosman?
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir.
I often bring this up, but the city gets sixty five percent of the money. Where do they keep their prisoners at? Is, do they have a jail that I don't know about?
Not that I know of either.
Okay, so they get sixty five percent and they just drop them off at our place? Sorry.
I think I'm still looking for a motion.
I'll make a motion to approve.
Second.
Motion by Benega, second by Hamburger?
Yes.
Alrighty, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Pose same sign, motion carries. Alright, consider a motion to authorize the Sheriff's Office to purchase one twenty twenty Dodge Ram fifteen hundred SSV from Billion Auto in the amount of thirty two thousand and seventy six dollars.
The vehicle request I have in front of you this morning is um, a result of us trying to find fleet vehicles as a result of COVID and microchip shortages. And it is really hard to find any dealerships that will place an order. A lot of the manufacturers aren't even taking orders for any fleet vehicles. We still have twenty twenty one budgeted funds for uh, Sheriff's Office vehicles. And we have identified Billion Auto here in Sioux Falls that had some foresight and purchased fleet vehicles right before the microchip shortage. And so they have vehicles on hand uh, that meet the state bid requirements. They will match the exact same dollar amount as the state bid. That was supposed to be awarded to Wagner Auto and Pier. I tried calling Wagner and they're like, sorry, like, maybe next year you'll get in a vehicle. Uh, we can't wait till next year. Uh, Billion Auto has been a really good partner. We like to purchase local if possible. And so I think that with this request, we're kind of accomplishing two things. We're getting our vehicle that we need and we're able to purchase locally.
Motion to approve the purchase.
Second.
Motion by Bar, second by Bender. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Pose same sign, motion carries. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Alright, to the highlight of the meeting, consider a motion to uphold, deny or amend a decision by the Minnehaha County Planning Commission to approve CUP number twenty one dash thirty five to allow a Class C hog concentrated animal feeding operation for nine hundred and sixty animal units on the property legally described as the southwest quarter of section nineteen. T one oh one NR fifty two W, Mr. Hookman. I hope I got that right.
Uh, good morning. This is Kevin Hookman from the County Planning Department. Uh, this is an appeal hearing, a public hearing for an item that was heard in front of the Planning Commission uh, that was appealed. Uh, we received uh, the application for a Class C CAFO, it's for a hog confinement of nine hundred and sixty animal units. Uh, we had three separate appeal letters from uh, individuals and representatives of several other people as well. Uh, the location of the property uh, is, the whole property is the southwest quarter of section nineteen and um, Wellington Township. And uh, the proposed property is gonna be a platted portion of the of the property. And I'll bring up the site plan for that. And it's gonna be located in the southeast corner of that property. Um, the petitioner uh, has this plat, proposed platted property. It, this site plan does show that it meets all required setbacks of the comprehensive, uh, of the uh, ordinance. Uh, I should note that the CAFO being that it's a nine hundred and sixty animal units in size is small enough that it does not require a state permit for the general state pollution control permit. Um, at the Planning Commission meeting, uh, many neighbors were present and I see many of them are here today. Uh, they commented on uh, smells, traffic, dead animals and general unsightliness that could be issues with the proposed barn, um, plus other things, and I'm sure I'll hear more about that. The Planning Commission uh, discussed these items and discussed the the staff report. Uh, they did add a condition as as of approval uh, at that meeting. So um, uh, it included a required landscape plan on the west side of the barn. And and on the site plan here, you can see that there's a, uh, the site plan did add space for uh, trees to screen on the west side of the barn. Uh, but no real specifics on uh, types of trees or um, size of trees or that sort of thing. Um, the Planning Commission did approve the CAFO with the amended conditions with five votes for approval and one sustained, abstained vote. Um, and I will go through the the photos here. So I, this is the the view from the pictometry uh, here. Uh, and the red arrow is roughly the location of the barn location. And you can see that on the left side of the photo, this would be to the west. Uh, there is a subdivision of houses there. Uh, and that road serves as the boundary for Minnehaha County and McCook County. So the, that subdivision is in McCook County. Uh, it gives you an idea of the gravel road, um, that is, that the barn is gonna go on. It'd be just to the right of this location. Uh, looking kind of upstream, there's a little bit of a creek there that was just cleaned out recently, uh, the spring. And uh, you can see kind of where the barn's gonna go. And so it's basically a a cornfield as of right now. Um, so I'll go back to the site plan. Uh, as a uh, an appeal item, uh, the Minnehaha County Commission can uphold, deny or amend the Planning Commission's approval decision of the conditional use permit. And uh, this is a public hearing again, so um, there will be plenty of people here to speak to it, so. Is there any questions?
Questions for Kevin? Alrighty, um, first off, I want to thank our planning commission for the work they do. It's not always easy decisions and they are working with their friends and neighbors typically and it impacts um, people's lives. So thank you for the hard decisions they make. Sometimes they have to come to us and that's why we're here. Commissioner Bender um, had it necessary to recuse herself, so she will not be involved in this discussion. Um, this is a public hearing, so we will be taking, um, first, we will be taking those in favor of the CAFO and then those opponents to the CAFO. So I'm gonna ask that people um, keep their comments relevant to what we're discussing. Please do your best to avoid repetition on what others may have said. If you want to reference, I, you know, I feel the same way that so and so does about smell. That's fine. Um, but um, please keep the conversation relevant and without repetition. Alrighty, so we will start with the proponents, the um, individuals that want to build this operation. Do we have anybody here that would like to speak to the commission? Please identify yourself, name an address, if you don't mind.
My name is Lloyd Stockwell. I've lived in the community for over sixty some years. Uh, we've had a hog building, an open face to the north of this before. Uh, there was a confinement put in there and uh, there was a conflict of our hogs as far as health concerned and with that building, so we discontinued that and built another hog barn. Uh, I've read the letters. I would like to address some of their concerns. Uh, I'd like to reserve a little time to to speak afterwards.
There will be opportunity for you to rebut, sir, yes.
Thank you. And uh, at the last meeting, we got to hear their concerns. We are here to try to find some solutions to these problems. Uh, they wanted tree, trees to the west side and we agreed to that. Uh, with the dead pin, I am more than willing to put up a six foot chain link uh, slotted fence, all four sides, so that they don't see that. I'm sure you've seen some of the pictures there. They were from the backside of the dead pin that the pigs were never seen from the front. My son is running the other barn. Uh, his concerns was mostly with the the hogs and their health. He has been graded at a ninety three to ninety four percent performance, performance rating from Centerra. When I went to college, that was an A. There was some clutter there. It was brought to our uh, attention. It has been cleaned up and weeds taken care of. Uh, Mr. Ma, or Mrs. McNamara wrote a letter. Uh, they had rented my property for approximately five or six years. Uh, when Tom come to rent the place, he said, I will pay the rent on time and you stay the F out of the house and I will do all the maintenance. And he did and he paid his rent. So any roughing problems from twenty five years ago, I did not know until the letter. Uh, they, she also mentioned that there was a hog eating another hog at at that place. And hogs are cannibalistic, you know, I'm not disagreeing with that. That facility is the one that we closed because of the neighbor putting in a confinement close to it for disease reasons. That was far worse stink and I agree with her there. It stunk. Hogs do stink. And we're trying to do everything that we can to mitigate that. Uh, if I had that same unit there, it was polluting of Elsie Prig. The manure was running in it. It would far stink worse than what a new ones is. Uh, the manure has been, is treated. You'll hear some of this from my son. Uh, I really think that this is the future farming. I remember when my grandfather had hogs. It's not that way, people. You're not driving a forty one Ford and you're not living in a house with with wood heat and we're not farming with an age on deer anymore. This, if you wanna eat pork chops, I have to inform you, this is where you're gonna get your your pork chops. So, um, thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Stockwell.
Any of you have any questions for me? I'm more than willing to answer any questions.
Okay, we'll move on. Appreciate your comments.
Thank you.
You bet. Additional comments from proponents, those that are in favor of the building. Good morning. We need your name, please.
I'm Bernard Stockwell, um, Lloyd Stockwell's son. I live on the property where we're building the barn. Um, so the barn will be directly south of my house. Um, yeah, Dad kinda went over the timeline there a little bit, but uh, the neighbor put a hog confinement in uh, just east and north of our house, so we stopped raising pigs at my house. Um, just because, like he said, for disease and things like that. And we moved our hog operation to a different site and, you know, used a modern uh, modern building plan and uh, it's worked really well. Uh, we've done a good job. Uh, and pigs, pigs do smell, but uh, I've done a good job managing it. And um, I just wanted to read a a letter and I made made some copies if you guys wanna read it. But this, this is from the feed manager at uh, at Central Farmers. He said, my name is Tyler McCoy. I am the Feed Department Manager for Central Farmers Cooperative. I've been working with Bernie for almost two years now and he has been a great customer and grower to work with. He understands the duties of running a finishing unit and what it takes to keep the facility up. My drivers have never seen any dead pigs laying around the facility or any rodents. He has bait boxes out and keeps up with the grass. He purchases pit additive from us every other month like is recommended to try to keep the manure broken up and the gases down. He's a valued customer to CFC Feed Department. We look forward to growing our business with him. I hope you take that into consideration during the zoning process. And then uh, I have talked to some of the neighbors by my current barn. Um, so at at the half mile north of my current barn, um, these are actual experiences, not just the fear of a new barn going in, you know, an actual barn that's been there, you know, for almost two years. Um, so this would be, I have their address and stuff. I'll give it to you afterwards, but these are the Stomas. And uh, I just asked them six questions. Did you purchase your property before the construction of the Stockwell finishing barn? It was after. I asked, has your experience been good living within half a mile of the hog barn? They said yes. Do you have any concerns with the way Bernard has managed his current properties? They said no. I said, did you find the air quality to be acceptable within the half mile of the hog barn? They said yes. I said, was your property purchased below, at or above the asking price? They said above. I said, I asked, do you have any concerns with your property value going forward? They answered no. So that that was one concern that was brought up, that my hog barn will make their house value go down. And I'm here to tell you that's not what happened here. And that a half a mile, it's the same distance. It did not affect the the price. They paid above the asking price. Um, I guess I, I'm a fourth generation Minnehaha farmer. Um, this is the future. This is the future of agriculture. This is how, you know, it's gonna be going forward. We can't raise pigs the way they did forty years ago, or even twenty-five years ago. We have to keep modernizing. And if I'm able to earn a living on this farm and pass the legacy on, you know, to another generation of Minnehaha County farmers, I need to be allowed to modernize. I do use pit additive. I keep enzymes in there. You know, we're able to use fertilizer on the land. You know, the manure, it's a lot better for the land than artificial fertilizers that don't break down and build up in the soil over time. I have been a good neighbor to a lot of these people. I've pulled them out of the road ditch when they go in the ditch. I'm the first guy through, you know, clearing the snow in the morning after a snowstorm because I have to go feed my cows. I think three, three of the people that came and had complaints at the other meeting had actually purchased pork from me and had my pork in their freezer. I think it was three or maybe even four of them. So, I've had a lot of interaction with these neighbors. It's been very positive. I think there's been a lot of fear, fear-mongering that's been going on. Because with my other hog barn, you know, I've got people to the north of the hog barn that are a lot closer, and there's, yeah, they say it smell, smells, but it's not, you know, something that they're trying to get McCook County to change or anything like that. So, people that actually live by the hog barn, you know, are not super upset with it or not trying to move away because of it. And I just appreciate your consideration.
Okay, thank you, Bernie. Any questions for Mr. Stockwell? You want the handouts? Commissioner Hyberg?
Yeah, just a comment. We'd need a copy of the handouts for the recorder, that maybe that, the letter and those addresses or whatever. Need to go to the deputy auditor.
Give it to me, I'll give it to her or whatever. We'll get her.
And I guess I meant to initially start with my comments with, I know I received two emails yesterday regarding this issue. I did forward them, and I believe they are part of the public record. So, just out of full disclosure, when we are doing these types of appeals, since they are quasi-judicial, just wanted to make sure everybody was upfront. If anybody else received any others, now would be a good time to comment on it. Oh, the transcripts that were received, yes. So, we also received transcripts. They're also part of the public records, so all that information is available should anyone want to read it or see it. I think there are eighty-seven pages. So, just so you're aware. Alrighty, any other proponents for the building of this operation? Good morning, sir.
Good morning. Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the commission. My name is Steve Dick, 301 North Vandemark, Hartford, South Dakota. Also serve as the Executive Director of Ag United for South Dakota Coalition of Seven Farm Organizations. Certainly, our organization's position has been, when a farm family comes in and they meet all the requirements set forth by the local ordinances that are put together by the citizens of Minnehaha County, we would encourage you to follow that and support this family's effort. This isn't just about the Stockwell family raising hogs. You know, he had mentioned a letter from Central Farmers Cooperative, which has the largest grain facility in Minnehaha County in Lyon, South Dakota. So, it's a benefit for farm families, not only in Minnehaha County, but in McCook County, Turner County, and the region. And certainly, we see the changes with food processing that's happening here in Sioux Falls with the Whole Stone proposed pork processing plant coming on. So, this is a facility that will benefit a lot of farm families and a lot of families in McCook, excuse me, in Minnehaha County. So, with that, we would certainly encourage you to support this permit. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Dick. Questions, comments? More proponents? Okay, so we will move into the opponents to the CAFO for the appeal. And again, please keep your comments relevant and try to avoid repetition. And once the opponents are done, we will allow the proponents to address any topics that may be brought up. So, opponents?
Morning. Eric Willitsen, Willitsen Land Engineering, 902 South Cleveland, here in Sioux Falls. Now, while I don't have a stake in the game, I was approached by Tom McNamara. Tom and Rosemary are, live in the house just to the southwest of here. Tom and I work together in the industry I'm in. And he asked me, they were a little taken aback that, you know, that somebody was gonna come and build a four-hundred-foot building right by their house, you know, in rural Minnehaha County. So, I said, "You know, I've been in front of this body numerous times, know the procedures. This is a conditional use permit, and I'm here simply to explain to them what their options are, what a conditional use permit means, what you as the elected body to approve or disapprove can add for as conditions to a conditional use permit." And I've tried to just explain that to them. Now, many of them are gonna get up and address you today. They're probably not very used to a forum such as this, so bear with them. Obviously, their first with the letters and correspondence they've had between you, their first preference would be to see this facility moved to what they would consider a more appropriate location. Obviously, we know these are the future of hog farming, and, but just want to make sure that, number one, they're either located in an appropriate location, or two, the restrictions put on them are such that would allow the county to be able to regulate it a little more. Understanding that, and they don't really understand, and maybe I don't either, the differences between Class A, Class B, Class C operations. I hear twenty-five hundred hogs in one building, and they don't need any kind of permits or approvals from the state agricultural department. Put up a little bit of a red flag. They don't need any kind of permitting for manure control. They don't need any kind of permitting for animal disposal. We haven't really been explained to, or they haven't, how much traffic, truck traffic, essentially, can be expected on this gravel road to and from this? Can they be restricted from driving? Granted, the four or five families that are here all live to the west of this. The facility is a half-mile from a paved road to the east. Well, can that truck traffic be restricted by a conditional use permit to be required to go out that way? Is the township prepared for the additional maintenance? Can they be taxed with maybe some additional help on the condition of the road? This is a gravel road, and these are semis. And how many? They don't, so how many trucks? And what about dust? Can they be taxed, you know, can there be a condition for dust control? One of the bigger things, I think, is flies. Obviously, hog barns attract or produce additional flies. Can they be required to somehow do some additional control? Nobody said anything about real water. Is real water aware of this? And can real, how much water does one of these facilities use a day? And can real water provide that? And hopefully not adversely affect, you know, the other families in the area? So, there are just some, some technical things that really I don't think have been addressed, the landscaping, the screening. I think they offered to put up some trees and do some screening if they were required at the Planning Commission meeting, but it was just kind of dropped. So, there isn't any requirement? Don't see anything on the site plan? Kind of just looking at some of those things. So, again, I'll let them address you with their concerns, but keep in mind some of these things is there, you know, obviously, again, their preference would be a more suitable location. But if not, and they meet, they're meeting the requirements, can we put the conditions on them to make sure that this can be inspected and that it will adhere? There's been some speculation or some talk, and it was brought up at the Planning Commission meeting, about one of their other facilities that there's been some problems with and that haven't really, at least in some's opinion, been adequately addressed. And are we, so are we going down the same road, or can we make sure that if this happens, that there's recourse by the county to be able to do something? So, with that, I guess I would let them, unless you have questions for me, address you, and again, thank you for your time.
Might call you back, but we're, no.
We're good for now. Thank you, Eric. All right, other proponents, please. Opponents, yeah.
Good morning. Callie Bryant Bleeker. I live about a quarter-mile from where the hog barn is gonna be placed.
You have to give, you have to give your address, sorry.
Oh, my address is 26597 454th Avenue. I am gonna read an appeal letter that the lawyer wrote for the group that is opposing this, and I do have copies for you guys, so I'll hand those out.
Were these part of the public record already? Because if they were part of the public record, we already have copies of it.
Did you get, have you read the appeal letter that our group wrote?
Yes.
Okay.
Got a deposition.
We read the deposition, and I believe the appeal letters. Am I wrong?
It's the same letter, though.
Copy to look at while I read it?
Sure.
Okay.
Okay, that'd be great. Thank you.
We've read those. We've seen it.
Has our recording secretary got a copy?
Yep. We're gonna pass them all down.
Do you want me to read it out loud, so that it's on record?
It is on record.
It is?
It's already on record.
Okay. Okay. It is addressed to Mr. Hockman. This letter is intended as a written appeal of the Planning Commission decision entered on May 24, 2021, approving the CUP 21-35. This writing is being emailed to you on June 1, 2021, following my email to your office based on your representation that the email document sufficed. The appeal is pursued on behalf of several residents of both Minnehaha and McCook Counties. As further detailed in Epidex A, the individuals will be referenced herein by their last names as appropriate or collective as appealing. Each of the appealing is an aggravated person within the meaning SDCL 11-2-1.1. A new Class C CAFO is, of course, a conditional use in an A1 agricultural district. The additional use regulations in Article 12 have the purpose to ensure that the CAFOs are purposely sighted, maintained, and managed. The CUP application is to include all required site plans. Elements for a CUP is listed on Section 19.04, a Dead Animal Disposal Plan, a Manure Management Plan. The MCZO has required maintained separation distance in the sighting of the CAFO, Table 2, providing these distances may increase based on site for specific conditions. Staff report notes, "The submitted plan includes nothing in the way of landscaping while the writer did not attend the, the writer is A.J. Swanson, the lawyer that we hired. While the writer did not attend the Planning Commission hearing, these who did state the applicant in the face of concerns that no landscaping had been included offered to plant several rows of six-foot green evergreens." So, the Stockwells have offered to plant several rows of six-feet mature evergreens. Applicant's offer was ignored. The decision requires no such landscaping. Appealingants believe that it is possible for the class of CCAFO operator to meet the apparent objectives of the zoning ordinance, but this requires a facility that is properly sighted, maintained, and managed. Appealingants further believe that the applicant, including his family members, is not such a person who can or will provide proper management or, proper management or maintenance of this facility. The next page has a picture of the facility in McCook County. Stockwell, along with his son Bernard, are now the proprietors of the existing Class C CAFO, similar to not identical in size and design here after Spring Valley CAFO. This is just as a site of Section 23 of Spring Valley Township, McCook County. This is just over two miles to the west on Highway 42 and 265th Street from the location of the proposed CAFO. Appealingants include several neighbors who now live within sight of the Spring Valley CAFO and are familiar with appearance of the structure and the obvious lack of management and maintenance of the proprietors. Photo A is a view of the CAFO showing an existing curtainside barn. Photo B following is a recent view of dead hogs in a plywood collection facility. This photo was taken by a neighbor who advised some of the dead had been there for four, three to four weeks. The neighbor reports that a call to the McCook County Sheriff was required to prompt action in the part, in the part of the applicant. Appealingants further believe the Spring Valley CAFO is a subject of nuisance and trespassing litigation brought to the owner of the large parcel of the real estate located just a few, few feet further west of the pile of the dead hogs. That case is Harold Swartz versus Lloyd Stockwell and Bernard Stockwell, filed in June of 2020, and is now pending Circuit Court of First Judicial Court, First Judicial Circuit. Property owner by the Stockwell family along, align, align along Highway 42 and both Highway McCook Counties, and the conditions common to those properties can rarely be seen referenced to Google Maps. The Spring Valley CAFO operation, however, was developed since the last photos of the area. A type view of photo C follows reflects the debris of farming activities typical of applicant's properties. Applicant maintains a recently constructed farm shop on 454th Avenue just inside the McCook County, a short distance to the north property of Jerry and Roxanna Drez. A recent photo reflects the exterior inwards of the shop is nearly as cluttered and jumbled as the rest of the Stockwell's properties. None of these photograph examples of Stockwell land uses installs any confidence the applicant is likely to prepare, manage, and maintain the CAFO in the Wellingtonship Township. Hog manure is comprised of many dozens of chemical compounds, 140 or so, which exclude odors and are highly heavier than air, including hydrogen sulfide. These odors spill from the CAFO manure pit pushed along by the air. A property designed windbreak helps provide air turbulence and lift to elevate and disperse the odors. There is no such windbreak around the Spring Valley CAFO. The odor issues at the hog confinement of applicant become so evident that while unknown that McCook County amended the county's zoning ordinance in 2020 in an effort to avoid further such problems. Required setbacks from homes in McCook County are now one-half mile from Class B CAFO, which pertains to this operation of less than 1,000 AU. Several of the applicants have health concerns based on pulmonary limitations. The CAFO is an ordinary curtain-size, curtainside barn with no filters or airflow restrictions. The dust and particle debris from the hog confinement operations is a considerable, if largely unseen, risk for those with pulmonary disease. One of the applicants is a military veteran with service-related pulmonary disease, resides perhaps 2,000 feet from the proposed facility, while another elderly with breathing difficulties. Each of these applicants is concerned about the adverse health effects of living this close, even though not objectively too close under the separation distance standards of the county's ordinance to Stockwell's CAFO. A properly and professionally designed windbreak would help dispel such debris particles and odors. But Minnehaha County Planning Commission has imposed no windbreak or other special requirements on the sight of the CAFO. Appealingants also believe that the South Dakota DENR will take no action on a complaint concerning the CAFO if the size, unless it pertains to pollution of waters. It seems unlikely that the county's planning officials will much, will be much interested in complaints regarding orders such, since the Stockwell's CAFO objectively meets the requirements of the curtain, of the current ordinance. But certainly, the county will take into consideration the actions applicant as to how he manages his properties and operations. As the applicant likely to manage and maintain the CAFO to meet the objects of this ordinance, which is also to protect the interests of other party owners' residents who have established and used long before the CAFO came to be. Under present circumstances, Minnehaha County has essentially left Stockwell's neighbors with no resource, but to turn to a legal system to deal with the nuisance that will surely follow when allowing a CAFO development that is neither apparently maintained nor managed, a site without county requirements, means for controlling movement of odor and fumes. Very truly yours, A.J. Swanson. The next part of the letter are, is a part of the petition that I went around with. It has thirteen people that signed it. The last two, sorry, number, I'm not sure what number that is. It's Bill and Slavic, so the the third name from the bottom and then the very last name from the bottom, those are the two neighbors that currently live across from his current hog barn in McCook County. Sorry. Bernard just quoted that a neighbor, and I don't know who that neighbor's name is because I went and talked to the neighbors, said that that their that neighbors are not bothered by smell, that they do not mind the hog barn living there, and I don't know who that neighbor is because I went directly to those neighbors and I talked to them. And those neighbors are, like I just said, Slavic and Bill. And when my husband and I went around with this petition, they were very, very concerned that another hog barn was going to be built and managed by the Stockwells. The other thing that we are having an issue with, like if you turn back to the pictures of the dead hogs, is there is no rendering services that are being done, and that is Stockwell's reputation. For years, sixty years, they have been in the area farming, and what they will do with their dead animals is they will take them and they will put them behind their houses. And it's not an eyesore, I don't care if I see a dead animal, it's the fact that we have coyotes. And dead hogs being carelessly left out, like in the picture, will lead to an increase of coyotes. We directly hear them every week when we are at our homes. One month ago, my donkey was protecting a colt and was bit up really bad. There is flesh missing from all of her feet right by the hoof. So I'm talking like large pieces of flesh gone, bones were exposed. Luckily, the colt was okay because that's why you have donkeys. But coyotes is a very bad problem that we have, and that will put our livestock in danger, which costs us money. They are going to say that those pictures were done during the beginning of COVID, and they were done during the beginning of COVID, and they are going to say that it's because the rendering service couldn't come out and get them, but they don't have a rendering service. All they do with their dead animals is they put them behind their residence or their bill or their businesses. And that's all I had to say for myself. So is do you guys have any questions for me?
Questions for Kaylee. All righty.
Okay. And now I'm going to take up five more minutes of my for my husband because my husband couldn't be here today. He wrote a letter. So Scott says, my apologies for not being able to make the meeting today. I am at a mandatory manager meeting that is out of state. One year ago, or sorry, my one-year deployment from Afghanistan ended for me in September of two thousand twelve. I was twenty-nine. Now I am thirty-seven. Immediately entered into United States, I was being tested for lung disease. When I asked the doctors why, because at the time I didn't have breathing issues, they told me the base I was on was large and burned illegal trash. Afghanistan is a world a third world country, there are zero landfills. That is what war zones do to get rid of trash. The following year, I went in for my yearly checkup at the VA and did a pulmonary function test and a CT scan. At thirty years old, I was diagnosed with pulmonary disease from the VA. I suffer from shortness of breath daily. Your average cold that takes the common person three to five days to get over sits in my lungs for weeks. I am extremely high risk for respiratory infection. Hydrogen sulfide, which is the which is what the current resident smell of the current Stockwell hog manure plant, note lawsuit Harold Schwartz versus Lloyd Stockwell and Bernie Stockwell, is extremely bad for someone in my condition to smell every day. My pulmonary disease will worsen quickly. When my wife and I went around with the petition for the hog manure plant that Stockwell is trying to put across the road from our house, we talked to both houses that live across from the current hog manure plant in McCook County. The testimonies were disturbing, and all I could think about was how the hydrogen sulfide they were describing that makes them leave their home some days, keeps their kids from playing outside, will ruin my lungs. I have enclosed the doctor's notes from my primary from my primary, and I give you guys copies of that, too. It's unfortunately, when I called my pulmonaryologist, the wait time to see him was October. My primary doctor has my medical records and is who I see with my lungs issues like colds and respiratory infections. My primary is worried about how close this hog manure plant is going to be to me, given my current health condition. Please take into consideration that the wounded warrior combat veteran was here before the hog manure plant was. Thank you for hearing me out, Scott Bleeker. Thank you.
Thank you. Other opponents, please.
Carmen, I will live directly west of this property if it goes up. I know you've heard a lot about the smell. My concern that hasn't been brought up is that if this barn goes up, it'll be the third barn within less than two miles of my home. I will be surrounded on all sides by hog confinements. I'm not opposed to agriculture. I grew up on a farm. We raised cattle. We milked dairy cows, and we farmed the land. I just want to be able to sit outside on my front deck, which unfortunately faces the southeast, which will be directly looking at this hog barn and getting the smell from it. I want my quality of life to remain where I can sit outside, and no matter what direction the wind is blowing, not have to smell hogs all the time. That is a big concern. I, you know, I think that is something anybody would want, you know, being able to enjoy their front deck, no matter what time of year it is. When you drive down Highway forty two, there is two barns. The first barn is on the north side of the road that is owned by the Lukes, and then further heading closer to Lake Vermillion. Before you go down, the riverbed road is Stockwell's on the south. Many people have called in and made complaints to McCook County that it smells worse than a kill plant, and I've drove by there, and the smell stays in your car for at least three to four miles after you drive by their hog confinement either way. That isn't the case with the Lukes's. There is a difference in the smell of the barns, and no one has explained how that happens. You've already been touched on the increased traffic on the roads. We have seven small children within the houses on the west side of the gravel road on four fifty fourth and, you know, wanting to make sure that there is a proposed route of traffic if this is approved to keep them away from the children. Again, this might not be a huge issue for a lot of people, but I had a stepdaughter who was killed at the end of our gravel road where it meets Highway forty two. They were rear-ended by a van pushed into an oncoming semi, and it almost killed my son as well. So really concerned about excess traffic, you know, on the ends of our roads. We used to take four fifty fourth to go down to Highway forty two to leave, and we still do sometimes, but again, that is where the accident happened, to divert. So there is no hill. We all would take two sixty six because there is no hill blocking the traffic view, and there's less tailgating and people coming up behind you and slamming on their brakes because you're in a hilled valley where that stop sign, there is no stop sign. So concerned about the roads being torn up when it is wet because they get soft, they get sloppy, and, you know, you have to use four-wheel drive to get down them. It's just a matter of fact. And yes, we do live out there, and we choose to live out there because we enjoy it. So we would hope that there would be a route to the barn that would alleviate them tearing up all the gravel roads and protecting the children of the area. And concerned about those that have other building eligibility's that they could build on, you know, that would put them closer to this proposed site. And yes, we are concerned about our property values dropping. If, you know, maybe one barn across the road isn't going to be that big a deal for your property value, but once people get wind of, oh, there's three barns, or, you know, then when is there going to be a stop? Is there going to be four barns? You know, yes, we did do live out there, the right to farm, but there's also a right for us to enjoy our quality of life. And you have stated that in your Article nineteen of the county's conditional use permit criteria, nineteen oh five D, items one, five, and six start alleviating to that for reasons that you don't have to approve this, and it does state such as those of quality of life of existing neighbors who had their property there before the barn was mentioned. We would just hope that if this is approved, that there are some safeguards and conditions for us to fall back on if things aren't kept up and maintained, because we have all witnessed to certain things that have happened in the area. We've all heard other neighbors complain that are close to their barn. I have talked to people at McCook County, and they're dealings with the Collins, and they have become so numerous, they can't even keep track. So I thank you for your time and your consideration and what you have to do. Questions?
Questions?
Not yet.
Okay. Other opponents.
Tom McNamara, two six six oh eight four five four Avenue. Live maybe a half a mile from where this shed's going in. Rented a house from Lloyd, didn't care if the roof leaked, it's his house and not mine. Wasn't a hog shed there. He he raised a few hogs, not many, little pig operation. This this thing is different, you know? This is Minnehaha County, they all talk about this as a new way of farming. Well, Minnehaha County is a different way of farming. I mean, it's nothing like it was in nineteen forty one. There's people living the country all over. You people want the people here in the county, and then you want to build a big high-topper house, get tax money out of it, then you want to build a hog shed across the street from it. It's got to be a different place to build a hog shed, or maybe not build it at all. Trees ain't going to help it, ain't going to help the smell. Drive by one sometime, I'm sure you all have. They stink. Put it away from the houses. We all live out there because we want to not have conflict with our neighbors. I don't want to live three feet from the guy next door to me. I mean, they got the right to farm, then farm, but don't start something new. Don't ruin my life just so you can be whatever. There's four or five people live there, just bought houses there. Two or three of these people just bought these houses. Now you're going to build a hog shed down the street from it? That'd be like, I don't know, putting a water tower next door to your house in Sioux Falls. You know, it just it just don't seem right, and they all want to be good neighbors. We all want to be good neighbors. I don't care what they do. I don't, you know, I don't scream and holler at them when they drive down the road. I don't care. I drive by his house, I slow down, they got kids. Drive by my house, they're doing fifty miles an hour because the speed limit's fifty miles an hour. Going to have trucks going up and down the road, you can't even get up and down that road in the wintertime. Like he says, he's plowed it, I plowed the damn thing for a mile just to get out, so I don't have to sit at the bottom of the hill on the other street where people get run over. I was sitting there one time with my wife, I said, you better hang on, we're about to get hit. The guy went off in the ditch, how he didn't die is beyond me. It's a terrible intersection up there. The roads are, they don't maintain the roads like, you know, it might it might snow out there, and it snows in front of your house, and two inches of plow in the road. I've seen it snow out there, two foot, and it didn't come for a week.
I think we're talking hot, we're talking hogs, not roads. I mean, not 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 snow.
Please keep it relevant to the the topic of the CAFO, sir. I understand you may have road concerns, but that's a township issue. This is a township road. So if you want to talk to your township about your roads, that's fine, but unless there's some relevance to traffic or the roads.
Yeah, whatever, then then that's besides the point, maybe, in in your point of view. It's just, you know, they they, when they put that manure in the ground, you ever been around it, it's it's terrible. They're going to put it seventy-five hundred feet from my house in the cornfield that they rent, and I got to live with that. You can't even be around it. It's it's just crazy, you know? I I just, and I hate to stop anybody from doing anything, but like I said, it's it's just it's just beyond reality to build that thing there with these houses there. They all got little kids, three or four of them, you know, they all got little kids. And it's I I and I could stand here and argue with you all day long about it, you know, and tell you, and it's up to you guys what they do, but this this is just not real, what they're doing there. They build hog houses, you're supposed to go out somewhere where there ain't people, you know, and most of them are out somewhere where there's no people. You go west, west of us, they build them out in the middle of nowhere. I was over in Minnesota and drove by them hog houses over there. Well, you said you got to roll the window up in your car, and it was, you know, just it just the building. So, I mean, I don't know, and I, like I said, I rented a house from Lloyd. We get along, why ruin it? But I guess he wants to make money, and I can't be, you know, I guess that's what you do, but this this is this is not good. This is not good. I mean, it's it's there's too many houses there, and you got, I just, like I say, I can stand there and argue with you, you know it. I don't got to explain this to you.
Mr. McNamara, thank you. I appreciate your comments. Other opponents. Seeing no other opponents, I will give the proponents a chance to maybe answer some of the questions that have come up. A few that I wrote down, truck traffic count, how many trucks will we be seeing? And, you know, is it at what type of a basis? Will it be weekly, monthly, four times a year? Would be a good place to start.
There's a feed truck once a week. That's semi. Loadouts, when they're loading out, it probably would be for a week, you would get maybe ten semis. There's loadouts three times a year. To be honest with you, far, far more semis, because we haul all grain out with semi. We probably run two hundred and fifty semis out of their farming with corn, beans, and whatnot, far more traffic with the crops than there will ever be with the hogs. You know, doubt a problem. I want to address the manure plant. We emptied our our pit out of our other barn this year. We put it at sixty percent of application. I do not want to spill not even one drop of that manure with your rea at five hundred dollars a ton. So if we got a problem with being short on fertilizer in the crop, we have a tissue sample. We are not farming back in the fifties. Our ground is all grid sampled, one acre at a time. There is no over-applicating of fertilizer. The corn that we plant versus twenty years ago, it took one point two units of nitrogen to produce a bushel of corn. Today, we are doing it on point six tenths of a unit. So there's not any waste, we're not going to waste that. We have that applicated this spring. State regulations, forty feet away from a creek, we stayed a hundred.
How often will you be doing nutrient disposal, sir?
Okay. And as far as the dead, I I don't think A.J. read any of the from the zoning commission, the lawyer there that wrote the sweet letter. He, I've offered, there was a grove to be put in, and we still plan on putting it in. It was drawn up by Kevin. We would like to, if we get started this year, whatever it takes, we will have them trees spaded in, and if we've got water there, they will be watered and taken care of. Let me assure you, on any rented ground, the manure is not for the price of fertilizer, I am not going to put it on rented ground. It goes on my ground, and I don't even have ten percent enough manure to cover my ground. It will all be knifed in when unless it absolutely freezes, you know, barring good conditions and environment, that, who knows what it's going to be?
How often?
So.
Mr. Stockwell, how often will you be knifing it in?
It would be once a year, usually in the fall, and we'll try not to do it during during November or the during Thanksgiving or any holidays, anything that's there. You know, we're not out there trying to punish these people. This is not our intent whatsoever. I'm glad that they spoke up today, and we heard some of the problem. We're trying to offer solutions. They're not cheap solutions, but we're willing to do it. You know, if you have some concerns or say, hey, we'd like to see you do this, we'll do it. They asked us to put the trees in. We didn't just stand here firm and say, no, we're not going to do these trees. We said, yes, we'll do these trees. We'll do them by the plan that Kevin projected for us. We're more than happy to do that. We're more than happy to put a six-foot woven web chain link fence around the dead hogs. So that's all I've got to say. I'm I'm sure Bernard's got a little bit to add. Is there any questions you have for me?
Mr. Schreiber.
There were several comments that you don't have a rendering service, and so I just, could you just tell us who your rendering service is?
That, well, you'll have to ask my son.
Okay. Okay.
Okay. Any other questions? Okay, thank you.
Bernard, we have additional comments, or rebut to the comments made.
Yes, the, uh, rendering service that I used was, uh, Sioux, Sioux Valley Rendering out of Rock Valley. I just wanted to read one thing, I know you guys have those depositions, but, uh, the, and I wanna get some distances right here. I've heard a couple people say they're gonna be a quarter mile from the hog barn. There will be no house that close, the closest house is at least a half a mile away. I mean, I, I guess I wanna make that clear, if we can measure it, or, I don't want it to be he said, she said, I want it to be clear that it's, it's approximately a half a mile. But, my other hog barn is a quarter mile from Stephanie Enstringer's house, and I actually got permission from Sunterra to give her a tour, and this is what she said about it. She said, "I think because Bernie was kind enough to give us a tour last fall of the confinement, and what I learned about the process, it's really, what do I say? It's really refined process. It's a stinky process, but it's a refined process. The pigs are well cared for, they produce really good pork that's safe to eat." Um, that's someone's actual experience. That's not someone's fear of what they might experience when a hog barn comes in. This is someone's actual experience. The other questionnaire I handed out to you guys, that's someone's actual experience, not the fear of a future hog barn. Not, you know, what could happen, um, it's, it's actual, actual experience, you know, and, and they talk about property values, that, that questionnaire tells you that someone that lives a half a mile away from my current barn paid above the asking price. So, and that's gonna be the same approximate distance, so, none, none of the people sitting here are at a quarter mile from the hog barn. I don't know why that gets said, but, um, I do a really good job, and I, I'm not upset with any of these people. If, if, uh, they have a concern, I wish they'd come to me and talk to me, um, like they have in the past when they needed help. You know, there's people on that, um, on that petition that I've, I've done a lot of stuff for, they're, they're neighbors of mine, uh, my kids interact, uh, I at least still go forward and explain any, any questions or concerns they have. I hope it doesn't, hope that there's no long-term hard feelings, because I, there'll be none on this side. Do you have any further questions?
One second, sir. Commissioner Benega.
Just a couple, if I could, Bernard, excuse me, um, did you talk to the township about truck traffic issues that you might be looking at down the road, so to speak?
Uh, yeah, they, they had to approve the new approach.
And there was no objections at that point?
No, they all understand that, uh, they all understand that the hog confinement will be less, less traffic than what grain production is. They, they're all well-versed in agriculture.
Yeah, I know that they were involved, but I wanted to know if they had any reactions. The other thing is, there was conversations about the rural water potential needs? Have you talked to the rural water about that?
No, I'll, I'll be having, uh, two wells dug. My other barn doesn't have real water.
Won't be needing real.
I won't use real water.
Okay. Uh, the other question I have is for county staff, so I'll wait for those. Okay, Commissioner Barth?
Uh, Mr. Stockwell, um, so have you found a difference in operating in Minnehaha County as, versus McCook County? Is our process different as far as, uh, getting the, uh, permission to build a facility?
So, with McCook County, it was just, you had to advertise that there was gonna be a meeting, and I think three local newspapers, and we did that. Um, yeah, and then they had a meeting, and...
And in Minnehaha, did we have different requirements?
Um, I guess we had the same site plan, um, you know, we have to have a plan for the manure, we have to have a plan for the deads, um...
Was that required in McCook County, a plan for the manure?
Yes. Yes, and we've upheld every part of that. The other thing, uh, someone said that the photo of a dead pig was recent, um, that wouldn't have been recent, uh, 'cause where, where you have, you know, where McCook County and the state told me to put the dead pen, you know, so no one could keep it, no one could see it from the road, um, that's what I used, but, once I found out that the neighbor didn't like it being there, I stopped putting them there altogether. You know, I didn't wanna upset him. So I think, I think it would've been like January of twenty-twenty, maybe, would've been the, the last, last time I used that. So I don't, when she said recent, that's, that's not recent. Anything that's ever been brought to my attention that someone didn't like, I've always tried to be a good neighbor. And as far as the dust goes, it's a wet manure pit. There is no dust with, with a wet manure pit. The manure and the urine goes down in the tank, it stays liquefied, the enzymes I put in keep it liquefied. Um, you can, I don't know how in-depth you've read these depositions, but all four of the neighbors that were deposed north of my other hog barn noticed no increase in flies, no increase in rats or any other rodents, no other coyote problems or, or anything like that. Yeah, I just think there's a lot of fear with a future hog barn, and people who move to this community later, it'll just be normal.
Any other questions for Bernard? I, I have one, and maybe you answered it when you answered, Commissioner Iberger. You said you have Sioux Valley Rendering, um, how does that work? Do you call them? I mean, do you have to wait till you have so many? Do you have one pig, you call them? What, how does that work?
Uh, so, you can just text the driver, and when they're coming by, it's usually within two to three days, um, they get it picked up, uh, but it's not on my schedule, you know, uh, and I've talked to people...
Charge you for picking them up, then? Or how does that work? Okay.
Yeah, but I've actually talked to other hog barn owners that recommend, um, a compost pit, where you would compost animals, you know, way out in a pasture, um, and so that no disease, 'cause some of the other barn owners don't like rendering trucks coming in, you know, bringing in dead pigs that are sick from a different barn. So I've, I've tried working with that a little bit, and I, I like that, um, 'cause then they don't even, I literally take my tractor to the barn every day, if there's a dead one, put it in the loader bucket, and go put it in the compost pit a mile and a half away. And that way, it's, you know, no one can ever take a picture of it and try to make me look bad, like it...
Um, I believe we have questions for county staff. Thank you, Bernard. Any other, um, rebutts? Um, ma'am, we already did opposition, so, yep, we won't take any more comments.
Well, Bernie is lying, and he's lying, he's doing things out, he's lying by omission.
We've heard your comments, we've heard his comments, ma'am.
Those depositions, you should read through them.
Kevin, welcome. I believe, um, we have some questions. Commissioner Benega.
Uh, Kevin, in the, uh, conditional use permit, when the, with the conditions, item eight was a landscape plan that talked about three rows of trees of the minimum row, excuse me, minimum height of six feet. Is that what we're talking about in this conversation? There was some conversation saying that there weren't required, but it appears that that's part of the conditional use.
Yes, uh, so, condition number eight was added at the planning commission hearing. So the original staff report did not include that condition. Uh, and I'll read it off, uh, as it was entered into the minutes, that condition number eight, a landscape plan for the purpose of screening the west side of the barn must be submitted and approved by the planning department. The plan must contain three rows of trees with one row minimum height of six feet at the time of planting. And I think that site plan, if we can bring that up, does show that, um, uh, there is space there, sixty feet by a hundred feet, uh, for those three rows, and although there isn't a specific plan for species or, um, spacing, uh, that further would have to be approved by the planning department.
Okay, that was my next question. My last question was about the fact that, excuse me, I'm sorry, uh, there's a conversation about a chain link fence that would be enclosed for animal, uh, disposal, I guess, and can that be included in the recommendations that the, uh, planning and zoning group made?
Uh, it can be included, it is, uh, a part of the ordinance, uh, already, so, hence why it wasn't part of the conditions of approval, that, uh, all dead animals must be stored out of sight of the right of way, or public right of way.
My last question, we talked about in your, uh, report about inspections, what does the county do for inspections?
So, uh, to begin with, the county will inspect the building, of course, for building inspections. Uh, after the building's up and operating, uh, we do site visits based on complaints. Um, it, there is, uh, there aren't any conditions here about, say, pit additives, um, and it's hard to, for staff, I'll admit, to say that the smell is a nuisance, because, uh, smell is something that's hard to, uh, for us to, uh, there isn't any ordinance against smells once it's there. Uh, so that could be included, that there are requirements of pit additives, but there's also, uh, uh, certain additives, we don't know how they're gonna be effective they are from one to another. Uh, so that has been an issue that has been difficult to pursue. Uh, if there's dead animals exposed or somewhere else, that, that has been addressed elsewhere in past CAFOs, um, i-if there's, uh, broken down equipment that's being stored outside, or, uh, other problems that could be a public nuisance, we can address those through the public nuisance ordinance as well. So yes, that would be the site inspections.
Uh, one other question, and how many complaints have you received about public nuisance-related issues with this property?
Well, uh, there isn't any barn there now, and the current barn is in McCook County, the one that they're talking about, so, I, I, prior to this, I haven't heard anything about it.
I just wanted to verify that it wasn't in Minnehaha County.
No, no public nuisance complaints to your office for any property that they own?
Correct.
In Minnehaha County, okay. Um, that's, okay. I, I wanna go back to the, um, tree row, I mean, is it meant for aesthetics? Is it meant for smell? And I know that there's been studies done by SDSU, and sometimes tree rows actually can create a worse problem than they're meant to solve. How is that addressed, or what are we doing here? I mean, is, is a buffer meant to be aesthetic, or is it meant to help with dissipating odors? And who makes that determination? And is it required in the conditional use permit?
Uh, it, currently, yes, it is required by the conditional use permit, and that condition number eight, uh, with three rows. Uh, three rows, I would say, is primarily for aesthetics. Uh, i-if we wanted to, uh, it has been considered to have the, um, uh, conservation district design something, uh, which typically includes up to about five rows of trees for smell reduction. Um, uh, and then they plant little conservation trees that are foot tall, um, and they will take a little bit longer to grow up into a, be a bigger tree. Um, a-and that also, I think, take, this is being aesthetics, it's on the west side, uh, you know, our prevailing winds are from the, the south during the summer and the north during the winter, so this will still allow, I guess, airflow through the barn, um, and probably not so much affecting the smells in those directions, so...
Other questions? Commissioner Barth?
Um, Kevin, you know, on the issue of the number of pigs, uh, twenty-five-hundred pigs seems like a lot, but that's actually just ninety-six, nine-hundred-and-sixty animal units, right? Whereas if you had chickens, it would be ninety-six thousand chickens, if you were counting them as animal units. Because a small pig is not the same as a full-size cow or a full-size hog, right?
Correct. Uh, Minnehaha County uses a structure of animal units in their ordinance, where, uh, everything is based large, are based on one full-size steer being one animal unit. So, uh, everything is compared to the amount of manure generated fr, and from that size of animal. So, a, a pig is, I believe it's point-four animal units, uh, which comes out to that nine-hundred-and-sixty animal units for that size of a barn. So it'd be the equivalent of having a thousand, uh, head of cattle on the property.
Where's the state permit required?
At, anywhere above a thousand. A state permit can also be required as part of approval of the conditions, uh, if the county requires it, then the state will, will come in and make sure that a state-approved
Commissioners, ball's in our court.
Mr. Chairman, I, I would just suggest that I, I will not accept that the trees die because of the drought. It's, it, the applicant needs to keep these trees alive, uh, until they're naturally watered, um, and we need to get those trees in the ground. I would also say that these roads were originally built to promote agriculture, they're roads to market. Talk about truck traffic, um, you know, with corn and, and grain. We have the best roads in the state of South Dakota, in Minnehaha County, and we are unbelievably like number four or number five in the state for ag, uh, value production. And, you know, that's going to continue. I hope that we can find technologies that make this type of operation even better. But I, I can also say that being involved in planning and zoning, that, uh, people think that a water tower should be put somewhere else, not here. People think a cell tower should be put somewhere else, not here. People think that, uh, a new subdivision should be somewhere else. There's nothing that, that is bringing change that the neighbors like, anywhere. You could put in Cindy's yarn barn, and they're gonna be against it 'cause of all the traffic. But the fact is that after they build that electrical substation, it's just part of the scenery, and you get used to it. There are a lot of hog barns in this county, and I'm sorry that the ones in McCook County stink, but let's not let ours stink, and I, I think we can prevent that.
So Commissioner, are you advocating for some sort of, um, amendment to eight on the, um...
You know, I, I, for so many... I favor our planning department to inspect the, the trees, and, uh, I know it's a long ways to go, but we have a beautiful county, I love driving around it, I will drive out there and look at it, too. We, uh, I, I hope that our county stays agriculturally orientated.
Commissioner Iberger.
So I live in the country, um, and I, um, I own some farmland, but I, we don't, we don't farm our land, we rent our land. I have a nursery, hog nursery, a mile from my house. I've never smelled it. I've had, it's not an exist, and I don't think right now, or not being used currently right now, but I have four of those big, long curtain hog confinements. One of them is two miles, and one of them by the furrow of flies is probably two miles. I have sat in the yard of the people that have three of those in their yard and had picnics and had, not had problems with flies. Of course, they spray for flies. And, and not smelled pigs. They have a nursery, or did have a nursery, right in their front yard, and it didn't smell. Um, I know what knifing is, beca, knifing in, because I used to have it knifed in on our property, even though we don't farm it, and literally, it was less than two-hundred feet from my house. Now, was there a day in, you know, in the early, um, nineteen nineties where it would stink, and I would complain to my husband, and he would say, "You live in the country." But it was usually one day, it was usually the day they knifed it in, or if it rained. But that was in the nineteen nineties, and knifing in, that has happened in my area since then, which, if they're not knifing it in on my property right now, but they're knifing it in about two miles from me. And I drive by there, and I have never smelled it anymore. I'm sure there are days it does smell. I have coyotes in my area, I open the windows at night, I can hear them howling. There are a few men in my area that will hunt those coyotes for you, you just call them, and they're happy to come and take those guys away. Um, and so, I... And so I know what the farm living is like, I know what the smell of the pigs are. I, I, I mean, my brother-in-law, in full disclosure, was a hog farmer for a long time. And I know what it's like to walk in a hog barn and come back out and stink, stink, stink. It's not easy. But what I can see and what I can hear is they're following every one of the ordinances that we have set forward for a hog barn. It is different than it was in the nineteen-eighties when I first moved out to the farm. It's different than it was in the nineteen-nineties, and I think it continues to get better. Like I said, I can't smell that nursery. And there are several nurseries in my area, a little bit farther than that one I mentioned. But there are quite a few hog buildings in my area. I live north of Sioux Falls, and so it's not where you guys live. I will be in support of it, because, of what the planning has put together. I think the trees are good. The ones that I was with, that I'm familiar with, some of them have trees and some of them don't have any. So I would be in support of upholding what the planning commission has already done, recognizing it's hard to live in the country, because I live there, too.
Mr. Chairman, I just want to comment on Commissioner Hyburger's comments. Because when I started as a county commissioner, we had a, a CAFO proposed north of Crooks. And there was a hog operation between the cattle operation and the city of Crooks. And they, as technologies advanced, they were using a pivot irrigation device to spray the manure over their property. And if you can invent a, a, a way to make it stink worse, I don't know what it would be. People driving by would get sort of an oily mist on their windshields. And people were objecting to it, I don't know why. But honestly, we have better technology now. We're going to have better technology in five years. And I hope that we continue to find ways to get enough food to eat.
Commissioner Benega?
I'm going to support it also for what's already been said. The only thing I would like to do is add to the conditional use permit requirements. And I think the tree thing has been identified in that plan. But I would like to require that the chain link fence in a closure be constructed to not be able to see the animals. I'm sorry about my voice.
The dead animals?
Yes.
Good point. Okay. So you're proposing an amendment to the CUP that would require an enclosure, a chain-linked woven enclosure around the dead animal pit?
Yep.
Chairman, I think that we've had a concrete pad with a six-foot fence around it is what it should be. Is that right, Kevin?
That has often been the, what has been used is a concrete pad or, and maybe even a concrete stub wall.
We had another operation where the farmer said that none of the deceased pigs had jumped his three-foot wall yet.
Okay, so is that a motion?
Is that typical of the cement requirement or not?
As I mentioned, it's not necessarily an typical requirement because it's part of the ordinance. We have seen concrete be a, a common thing because they'll just pour it when they pour the foundations. And then we've also seen plywood that, when one breaks down, they just put up another piece of plywood. So we've seen a little bit of, of everything, I guess.
So it's required by ordinance currently?
Comment? If you want to go that way, because it is required by ordinance, I'd be okay with a cement pad with just a chain-linked screened area. I don't think we need to have a wall around the edge of it, as long as it's screened. They're dead.
I think we ought to treat everybody the same, so I think that's acceptable.
The ordinance or, or changing it?
He volunteered to do the chain link, and I think that's above and beyond. So I would put that into the conditional use permit requirements.
So is it required to amend this?
If you're wanting to approve this with that condition, that would be the, the double-barreled motion. I would just say that you approve it with that, that additional condition on the.
State your condition, Gerald, and I'll second it.
I think we need to include.
Point of order, Gerald, are we going to make a motion to uphold and add the condition, or the additional condition?
Well, I don't think the cement part is required, and neither is the chain-link fence required in the ordinance description, as I understand it. Because we're letting people do other things with plywood and not using anything at all. But they've volunteered to do that, and I would think that would be a better process than frankly what was described. Any argument about that?
Nope.
Your double-barrel comment is confusing me.
Very confusing.
For, for clarification, you could, again, that, I don't have a vote. The, the motion could be that to approve the conditional use permit as approved by the planning commission, twenty-one thirty-five, with the addition of whatever your additional requirement would be. And I think Kevin would understand that if you have a site to the ordinance that you want included, we could certainly do that. Or if you just prefer to articulate what your additional requirement is.
My additional requirement is back to, I think, what I had tried to say, with the chain-link fence and the cement pad. Before I lose my voice.
So was that a double-barreled one, and you motion to approve the, uphold, to uphold the planning with the additional condition? I'll second that. I'll second that.
Mr. Chairman, could I ask you a question?
Motion to a second? Yes, sir.
Just for Kevin's edification of the, of the board, you had mentioned a sidewall. Is that part of the requirement? Or is it just the pad itself? Just so that we're making sure that Madison's?
Mine was just a cement pad.
I guess, so a cement pad with the chain-link fence is the way I understand it to be.
Is it at least above the current stature?
Yeah, and make it not visible. Yep.
So we have a motion and a second additional comments. I haven't had my opportunity to say anything, and I, I'm going to now. And I, first of all, I do support the motion and the second. And it's always a tough decision. I've been involved in these planning things for over ten years as an elected official, and it's never an easy thing. But I, to maybe the comments that have been made earlier, it's never as bad as what you imagine it's going to be. And I found that to be extremely true. And I think we've been very diligent in what we're doing. It doesn't matter if you live in town, you live in the county, or you have a boat in the middle of the ocean. Somebody's probably going to park next to you and change your view. Things are going to change, and that's just the way, the way, what we have to deal with and what we have to work around. So I have a motion and a second. I'm going to do a roll call vote. Call the roll.
Bender? Benega?
Aye.
Hyburger?
Aye.
Barth?
Aye.
Karsten?
Aye. Motion carries four to zero. All righty.
Can we take a five-minute break? I know we're almost done, but I was supposed to let Commissioner Bender know we were on, ready for her, and I forgot.
Oh, okay.
Can we take a five-minute bathroom break?
We'll take a five-minute break?
Five minutes? Five-minute recess.
Sorry, I was going to text her, and we got so busy. That's not on my break, and I can carry them around. Otherwise, I need somebody else around to help move the desk.
All right, Commissioner Barth is back, so I'm going to end our recess and continue with our meeting. We are down two, do, 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 what are we at? Liaison reports?
Yes.
Liaison reports.
I have a bunch.
Go ahead, Commissioner.
Sorry, it's eleven-thirty, and I'll try to fly through, I, just a couple of things. The libraries, as you know, we fund them through a, a separate levy. They had some sidewalk issues in the Crooks area. Figured it was about five thousand dollars in repairs. It's outside the regular budget. They did talk to Carol about it, and I'm assuming Carol is handling it. Yeah, so we make sure we get those sidewalks repaired. The former Bookmobile employee who worked for us for thirty-four years recently passed away. Her name was Pauline Strimers. And she left sixty thousand dollars to the Sulan libraries to be used towards a bookmobile as a gift for future bookmobiles. And that gift was accepted by the board. Then this last, or week and a half ago, two weeks, I don't even sure when. I went to NACO National Convention in, in Prince George's County, Maryland, and we elected our new president, which is Larry Johnson. It's quite an honor for South Dakota to, because the auditor from Davison County was appointed to the exec team just because of her involvement of, of getting to know Larry. And I think he's got good things coming for us, too. And the second vice president was nom, was nominated and elected at our convention, who is Mary Jo McGuire, and she's from Minnesota. And so she's anxious to come to South Dakota and get to know some of us, too. And it's kind of nice to have a neighbor and a Midwesterner elected to president.
Is she from Ramsey County?
She is from Ramsey County, yes. And she has a long history of legislative background and, and stuff in Minnesota. So you might recognize her name or recognize her face when you see her. At the, at the convention, they, Kamala Harris came and spoke, Nancy Pelosi came and spoke. Nancy talked a lot about infrastructure plans going forward. And, and Kamala talked about the leadership in the counties and stuff. The meeting that I normally go to, which is a day-long, was cut short because of Kamala Harris coming and the security they had to have to get in to see her. So we will be making up our meeting, most of it. We, we did pass all of our resolutions, and so those are available online if you're interested in looking at justice and safety or resolutions. Most of them deal with emergency management issues this year. But if you're interested in seeing them, you can find them on the NACO website. We will be making up our meeting in, in the future. There's also, this last year, they worked on a broadband report, national report. And so that is also on the NACO website, if you're interested in looking at that. I attended a long, there was many breakouts. Not as many as normal, just because, because of COVID, a three-long, three-year-long planning process got crammed into three months when they had to change venues because of COVID. So we didn't have quite as many breakouts as normal. I did attend a half of day of Safety and Justice Challenge, our grant that we have received, talking with other states and other counties on some of the work that they've done with the Safety and Justice Challenge. And I think just from listening to that room, we are way above and really moving fast in some of the advances we've made with the grant money that we've had. And a lot of people were interested in what Minnehaha County is doing. This last week, I attended the Justice Involved Leaders of Tomorrow graduation. If you remember, we used some of that justice and safety money to hire leaders of tomorrow group to come in and take some of our justice-involved individuals and take them through a, I think it's a twelve-week course on leadership. We had nine people apply for it or be referred to at the first round, hoping to work up to twenty-five in our next group. Those nine people all successfully completed their classes and graduated. They had two of those people speak at graduation. Their stories were compelling and actually, you know, almost, they wanted to make you cry. One of them, literally, there were people in my area that were shedding a few tears. It's just amazing what it did to these, for these people and helped them, gave them more hope and now a support group to move them forward. So I think we'll see really good things come out of that, Justice Involved Leaders of Tomorrow. They graduated those nine people with the normal Leaders of Tomorrow program that happens regularly. If you do know somebody on the justice inside or on the non-justice inside that would benefit from the Leaders of Tomorrow, they are getting ready for a new class, I believe, starts in September. And so they're looking for names of people in there. It's open to anyone, but they, they would like to see a diverse background as much as possible in their classes. That's probably all I got. I'd encourage you to go to the graduation the next time it happens. It was really, really great.
Did we get invites to that?
I'm not sure, and I will check, because I do, because I sit on the Safety and Justice Challenge. But the next time around, we should see if some more commissioners could go, because it's well worth attending. It's about an hour and a half long. It's a very good event, so.
It would be great if we could get invited.
Other liaison reports?
I would just say that, oh, I'm sorry. Go ahead.
Well, I just would report on the abandoned cemeteries board, which I was, got to be on a little kello overview of the situation. They did a great job of running drones over some of our cemeteries. And since that happened, I've had five people contact me about becoming involved in it and others wanting to know how they can get buried there. And we're having a meeting of the abandoned cemeteries board tonight at six-thirty at the main library.
Commissioner Benega?
Just report a little bit on the medical marijuana discussion we had a week and a half ago. We're having another one tomorrow morning, I believe, at eight-thirty at the library again. That was well-attended by representatives of all the county organizations that would be involved, including the cities. Looking forward to getting closure, or moving a little further to closure after tomorrow's discussion, but try to get everybody on the same page. So it's going to be legislatively easier to deal with. And frankly, waiting for the Supreme Court, I think, to make their decision and also figuring out what the legislature is going to do.
I wonder if they're just going to drop that on us.
That's what I'm afraid of.
No. All righty, any new business?
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir.
This is just a quick point, but we've not had all seven people up here since COVID. And, you know, hey, we outnumber the audience. But all seven of us, we, we distanced ourselves, we stayed home, we zoomed, we wore masks. And wow, what a group I work with here. It's, it's an honor and a pleasure.
Thank you, Commissioner. Any old business? All right, look for a motion to.
Recess?
Go to recess, and then we'll come back and adjourn to executive session. So I.
I make a motion to recess, and I vote aye.
Second? All right, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
We'll take a five-minute break. I think, Melinda, can you get it shut down?